Well, good evening, everybody. We apologize for the slight delay in starting. We had a technical difficulty back in our video control room, but we're sure glad you're here tonight for our meeting on March 3rd for Hendersonville Regional Planning Commission. And we always start out with an opening prayer, so let's all stand. And Commissioner Lee, would you please open us in order of prayer?
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day that you've given us. And we pray as we look around us at all the devastation and the lives that have been lost, that we look to you, the Keeper and the Founder of our faith, and the giver of all comfort, and the giver of all care. Father, we call upon your grace upon the people of Middletonessie as they suffer through the damage of this terrible tornadoes and storms. Father, we ask tonight that you be with us as we preside over this meeting. We ask that we simply do what is in the best interest of this city, that we be fair to everyone that is here, and that in all that we say and do, that you will be honored and glorified. For it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. And just adding to the prayer intentions today, let's all keep those folks in the five points, Germantown, West Nashville, Mount Julian, and Donaldson in our prayers. I know that there was a massive devastation over there, and talked to several in the past several hours, so our thoughts are with them tonight. We have no public hearings. Let me also mention that we have a quorum. The only commissioner that is not here, I believe, is Darlene Stringfellow, and I think we're, so we have a quorum. We have no public hearings tonight. Is there any request for information and assistance from any commissioners? Hearing none. Additions to the agenda, do we have any? Hearing none. We have the minutes from February 4th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
We do accept.
We do accept. But Mr. Altizer, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. McCormick. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It carried. Excuse me, we have some extensions. Ms. Silkwood, Mr. Hardwick. We have two abstentions. Okay. We have the, now to the preliminary final development plans, and we'll turn this over to who, Mr. Free?
This is going to be Grant Green, who'll just give a brief overview-
Okay, Mr. Green.
...of those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a final development plan for Anderson Park, and it is substantially compliant with the preliminary development plan that was approved in 2019. This is also called for an extension of Parish Place. This is, this matches our major thoroughfare plan, and this will eventually connect over to Bonita Parkway at Main. The final development plan has 192 units, and this is less dense than what was actually approved with the preliminary development plan, which had 211 units. So they've made some changes that did lessen the density. Does have 384 parking spaces. That does not include the garage spaces, so there are extra parking, there is extra parking area, but the actual surface spaces have 384, which matches the required number. This also has an eight, it varies, an eight-to-10-foot multi-use trail throughout the development along the creek down at the bottom. This also goes along Calendar Lane, which goes over by Lowe's and Main Street on that side, and goes all the way to Parish Place. And this also includes a playground and an amenity center. Here's some of the renderings up here. There's a good percentage of brick, usually about a 50% to 60% brick percentage on all the development, including hardy and some other elements. This has six phases. This includes a commercial bridge connection to the south that we have made sure that they, and worked with the developer to ensure that this is, this connection and the playground will be completed by the end of Phase Two out of the six phases, so that that's one of the initial things that are installed and developed. Let's see, there's, we do have the high requirement of brick, and we've worked with the developer quite a bit on these elevations to try to get a higher standard for what is going to be over there, and they've worked with this very well. And there's a lot of good design elements that we've looked at on all the different, all the different types of units, the quads and the townhomes, and even the single-family cottages. So developer is also contributing $3,500 a unit on this development. If you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to-
All right. Thank you, Mr. Green. They've agreed to all staff comments, so we can get it on the floor for discussion. Do I have a motion to accept with all staff comments? Motion to agree. So moved by Mr. Lee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, it's open for discussion. Do we have any questions for Mr. Green or any of the staff? Mr. Lee?
Yes. One question I had, and I did notice that we had requested a phase-in plan, and that phase-in plan was provided, but do we have a tentative timeline on what that phase, when those phases would come into play? That just helps on other things that we might need to plan for.
I've seen, I think I've seen multiple versions of that. I want to say it was 2024. What's the latest? Is it maybe 2028, the final build-out? Do you all have that? I think I have it available.
I didn't see a timeline. I saw phases, but I wasn't sure when they planned to start and when phase, I mean, and I know it's tentative because things change, but if you could give us some idea-
George, go ahead and give us-
George Welch with Reagan Smith, with Engineer for the Project. Plan is to start construction this year, and the final build-out, of course, will be market-dependent, but looking at 2028 as the final build-out.
Mr. Lee, anything else?
No.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff or for any of the people that brought the project forward? Okay, hearing none. We already have a motion in the second, and hearing no more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Woodcock and Mr. Hardwick vote no. Okay, we move on to the site plan, Anderson Park Site at Indian Lake. Mr. Free, who's it, Mr. Green?
Mr. Green as well.
Mr. Green.
Thank you, sir. This is the site plan. It does match the final development plan approval. They've essentially put the entire site in on this site plan, so essentially with the phasing, it should play out essentially the same way as the final development plan does.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. Once again, are there any questions for staff, just to get it on the floor for discussion? Do I have a motion to accept with all staff comments the site plan?
Moved.
Moved by Ms. McCormick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Altizer. Okay, it's on the floor. Any more discussion for the developer or for Mr. Green? Any amendments to offer? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Mr. Woodcock and Mr. Hardwick. Okay, moving on to Avenida at Indian Lake. Mr. Free, who's going to handle this?
This would be Mr. Whitten.
Mr. Whitten.
This site is located off of Cinema Drive. It's to the south of the streets of Indian Lake, across the street from Goddard School and Citizens Bank. It is owned MXCPD. It's in the Indian Lake Village Plan Development. This is a three-story independent living facility, age restricted to 55 and older. It will have 138 units, and the total building square footage is 172,218 square feet. The Indian Lake Village Final Development Plan was amended in 2017 to allow this use for this particular lot. Overall, the project is in substantial compliance with the approved Final Development Plan. However, there are two issues that have been called out in your staff report, is getting particular attention from the Planning Commission. The first of those is a requested waiver from the requirement to provide a 10-foot wide foundation planting bed on the north and south sides of the building. So that would be, the north side is the side that faces the streets of Indian Lake and adjacent parking lot, and the south side faces the Indian Lake self-storage building that's now under construction. They have been unable to comply with the required 10 feet due to some fire code restrictions. They do provide seven feet on their north and south sides. On the east side facing Cinema Drive, they comply with the 10-foot requirement. Also, on the west side, they also do comply with that 10 feet. I believe they, we talked this afternoon, and they do have a potential reconfiguration that would allow them to meet that 10 feet, but that's dependent on some other factors that they can't really determine right now. So they would like to go ahead and request that waiver if and when they need that. The second issue has to do with the building architecture. There's a number of planning staff comments listed under number 16 that need to be worked through. Those are items that, while staff is not necessarily looking for each and every one of those items to be fully implemented on every point, on balance, the architecture does need some tweaking here and there in order for it to be compatible with surrounding developments, and we saw some of the pictures up there. We had a discussion with the architect this afternoon, and they have agreed to work with staff on those items to get the architecture to a satisfactory point. So if this is approved by the Planning Commission, we will work with them post-approval to resolve those items. And if there is anything that can't be resolved between staff and the applicant, then they could always come back to you for consideration of those particular items. But we believe that this, the building is pretty close, and it won't take too much more to get it into compliance.
Okay, walk us through, since they are requesting a waiver, walk us through the waiver one more time. They want to go from 10-foot required, which they're meeting on all three sides, to seven feet on the one side. And mainly, that's because of the fire restrictions that are in place.
Right. The request for the waiver is necessitated by a fire code requirement. So they are meeting on two sides of the building, they're meeting the 10 feet. That's the east side facing the public street, and the back of the building that faces what will be a future retail area. So the waiver is needed on the north and south sides. That's the north side faces the streets and that adjacent parking lot, and the south side faces Indian Lake self-storage. So they need the 10, they need the waiver from the 10 feet on the north and south sides to allow seven feet.
Okay. Since the applicant is requesting a waiver, that would affect, of course, they are agreeing with all the staff comments and have agreed to work with staff on the design element issues, but let's talk about this waiver a little bit. And are there any commissioners that would like to ask any questions with regard to the waiver that's being requested? Ms. Longmire. There you go.
There it is. Okay, sorry. Yeah, I'd like to know what the, is this green space that they would be reducing, or is this sidewalk or asphalt? What is it?
Mr. Whitten?
It would be, it would be green space that they're reducing. So they would be going from 10 feet to seven feet of width, of green space, width-wise.
Is it like in this area? Is it the-
I believe that's right. So where Keith has his pointer, it would be that green strip there at the base of the building.
So I believe you said that there were some options that they might be able to meet, but they didn't want to commit to it?
They can't commit to that right now because it's dependent on some other factors that have not been squared away with fire. Again, this is a kind of, I guess, sort of conflict between a zoning ordinance requirement and a fire code requirement that's kind of requiring, or necessitating the request for the waiver. So there is that potential for actually complying with the 10 feet. They're not sure if they can do that, so they would like to go ahead and request that waiver now if they're not able to implement that other solution.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Owen.
What actually is the restriction?
The requirement is that for buildings that are two stories or taller, a 10-foot foundation planting bed is required. If it's under, if it's one story or less, it goes down to five feet.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I'd like to ask one more.
Okay, Ms. Longmire?
So when they reduce it from 10 to seven, what does the fire department feel that they're giving up?
I don't believe they would be giving up anything. That reduction from 10 feet to seven would put them into compliance with fire departments.
Yeah, let's bring in the fire marshal here, and he can answer Ms. Longmire's question, I think, with some expertise.
Shane Nolan, Hendersonville Fire Marshal Office. So the aerial apparatus requires a 26-foot road, and then within that, it has to be no less than 15 feet away from the building, no more than 30 feet away from the building. That's because when we set up our apparatus and put our outriggers out, we have a distance and an angle that we have to meet with our ladder to do any kind of rescue operations off the rooftop. That's what that code reflects.
Thank you.
No problem.
So this is a safety concern, and we want to be safe. So, do we have a motion or any more questions? Mr. Woodcock, I think you had some questions.
I think you're good. So to clarify, if we grant this waiver, the apparatus would not be able to operate as-
That's why I'm discussing it, because that's the clarification I want. If we grant the waiver, then it's all good. If we don't grant the waiver, then they have to work out whatever is the hybrid of whatever the solution that is, and so we're not really privy right now what that solution might be.
But if we grant the waiver and it's five feet, people can be rescued with no issue whatsoever?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to clarify that. Thanks.
Question?
Yeah. Now, you said rescue from the roof, right?
Rooftop, yes, sir.
So do they have access to the roof?
Yes, that's another thing.
They have been working with us very well on this. So this code could require one or more sections of this, this being such a large area. They've already gave us two, both sides. The rooftop access, we're still talking about that. Usually that comes into the building plans, so we're kind of waiting for that, but we're supposed to be getting details of that shortly. The way it's set up right now, that wouldn't be an issue because we could set up at any point and reach where we would need to be, so.
So it may not be an issue because they may not have access to the roof?
No, they're required to.
Okay. Any more questions? All right, thank you. Mr. Lee?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I had a question about the project, but not necessarily the waiver. Right now, we're just discussing the waiver.
Just the waiver, because I think what we need to do is decide a consensus about the waiver-
Yes, sir.
-and then we can add that into the plan. Okay? All right. So everybody got enough information about the waiver, okay? All right. So now, let's move on to the main plan. Mr. Lee, do you have some questions, really quickly?
Yeah, if a representative of the project is here, I would just like to know a little bit more about this facility that's being proposed. I certainly know what an independent living facility is, but in terms of the units, you know, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, studio, what are the units like? What's the business model? Are they condos or rentals, or just, you know, exactly what are we, what are we proposing to have here?
Sure, absolutely. Lee Horn, Reagan Smith, I'm with Civil Engineer, and the developers here as well to discuss some of those operational questions. It is a 55 and older community. It's 138 units within that development, and as far as leasing, I'll pass it off.
Just introduce yourself and-
Rob Mearhead with Avenida. We are active adult independent living senior community. We are 138 units, one and two bedrooms. We are for rent. Our niche in the senior housing continuum is between conventional multifamily and independent living. We typically provide one meal per day, whether it be a continental breakfast. We'll do some sort of, you know, housekeeping, and then we provide a lot of activities and programming, which is why, you know, we see this as a great fit for us being in the community. You know, right now in the community, there's the Clarendale, which is independent living and assisted living at much higher rents, and then there's a new Beazer for-sale condo community. So we think we're just, you know, the perfect fit here. We've been after Hendersonville and Indian Lake since, was it 2015? So we're really excited to finally be a part of the community.
Any idea in terms of the number of employees that you would be hiring to operate this sort of facility?
We typically have about five employees, full-time employees.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Lee? Okay, Mr. Woodcock, I see your mic on.
Thank you. This may, this question may be for staff or the developer. We approved a similar development, I think, just south of this, where the storage place is. Is that correct? I know that they changed their mind, but I just want to make sure I'm-
No, this, what was approved is that the Gatherings, so the storage unit, there is just to the south, that screen you were just on showed it. But, yeah, so the storage unit is just to the south of this. The Gatherings, which is the other independent living facility, is further, it's further east down Saundersville.
Where's the area? Can you put the area real back?
That's a facility there, which is condos, independent living, but they're condos.
And I asked this question when we approved that one, but then I went to sleep and forgot the answer. Who controls the age restriction?
Who can, we control the age restriction with, well, we had the use approved through the city of Hendersonville. The city is Hendersonville. Typically, what we do is some sort of deed restriction on the property, which we can do here. We do that in most of our projects, whether, you know, the city wants it or not. But it's, we are 55 and older.
And any changes to that, they would have to come back before the city?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodcock. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, just one additional question. Are there some other locations where you are, I'm sure there are, where you're operating these?
Yeah, we opened up in Cool Springs in June of this past year. It's called Avenida Cool Springs. It's off by the mall.
Okay, thank you.
Which is another reason why we love this site and-
Mr. Hardwick?
-makes all the amenities.
So you said you have one at Cool Springs-
Yes, sir.
-that we could go see?
Yep.
Being a three-story building, I'm assuming there's a common entry, elevators, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is for the staff. The land that is being left, what is it zoned?
Mr. Whitten? All of that property is, has the same zoning, MXC Plan Development.
So we're basically saying we're giving up retail for that area, and it's going to all be something other than retail?
No, sir. So it is the same zoning, however, per the final development plan that was put in place when Avenida was approved back in 2017. The remainder of that property is for retail. It is not, it is not for independent living. The independent living was specific to this particular lot.
So they could not do, another developer could not do senior living there?
Not without coming back to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hardwick.
One other, this, the garages, is that, I guess, that seems to be scattered around? Was that an issue that I saw on the plan, that you guys didn't like the way that was being, being developed? Because they look, no offense, but they just look kind of cheap.
It is an issue. It's part of that number 16, and that was part of the discussion we had this afternoon, and they've agreed to work on those elevations. And we do have a number of things that we would like them to do with those, and they acknowledge that those do need to be upgraded, and so that would be part of what they'll be working with staff on.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't see any more mics on, so at the present time, here's where we're at. We need to entertain a motion to accept with all staff comments, and then we need to deal with the waiver. And so I think a proper motion would be is to approve with all staff comments with the waiver, given this is a safety concern, and then we can go from there to see what the will of the commission is. So we'll go from there. Does anybody have a motion to make on this? Mr. Lee?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
That we approved with the waiver.
With all staff comments and the waiver, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Altizer. Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Mr. Woodcock, Mr. Hardwick, anybody else? Okay. Okay, it is approved. Thank you.
Is that just the waiver?
That's the whole thing. We did them both. Grab the waiver. Okay, now we move on to Cornerstone Primary Healthcare. Is Mr. Green handling this, or Mr. Whitten?
Sidney Simpson.
Sidney, okay, great. Are you on down there?
Yes, I think, I think so. So this, this property is on Maple Row Boulevard, and it is under, they're working out the purchase of this property, the Cornerstone Primary Healthcare, that's at 117 Maple Row Boulevard. They do have adequate parking on their site per the required site plan. However, they have found that they need additional parking, and this will just help relieve some of the congestion there where they have their staff members parked. So they are proposing a parking lot with 28 new spaces in addition to the 13 that they have on site. And then they have agreed to all staff comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but-
Okay. I think this plan's pretty straightforward, adding more parking spaces. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. McCormick. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Silkwood. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's carried. We move on now to Durham Phase Two, Section Two, Section 26, Villas, the site plan.
These two, these two could be grouped.
Okay, do we have a motion to move to group?
Move to group.
Moved to group by Ms. McCormick. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Altizer. All in favor to group, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, these are going to be considered together, so we're looking at 20-014-011 and 20-015-011, 001 rather, and we're going to consider those together. Okay, Mr. Free, who's?
Grant Green.
Mr. Green?
Thank you, sir. This, these are two site plans for Villa units that are part of the already-approved Final Development Plan for Durham Farms. One of these, the Phase Two, Section 26, consists of 26 units, and the other phase under consideration is 28 units. These, these are site plans. We have actually looked at these and looked at everything in depth, and kind of went out and looked at some things to try to ensure that, we want to make sure that we're looking, you know, at everything pretty intently, and especially with utilities and everything that's over in that area, and want to make sure everything is placed appropriately, and try to get, you know, the best, best possible look that we could out of the site and out of the architecture. We worked with Lennar- We, we worked with Lennar. Appreciate working with Lennar. They've really improved what they submitted from the first initial submittal, and they've enhanced it, and it is a much nicer product and more attractive than, than what, what we had. They've added some dormers and some features that, that we really think are going to help, help the look out there and kind of what we expect out of Durham Farms and what Durham Farms has set as the expectation. So, so these two site plans are both, they're both part of the approved final development plan.
Okay, we have these two site plans before us tonight. Once again, we'll go for a motion to agree to all staff, and a second becomes our property to begin discussing. Do I have a motion? Motion to accept both site plans?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. McCormick. Second by Mr. Lee. Any more discussion on any questions that you might have about the, the site plan, architecture for Mr. Green or for the applicant? Okay, I see no questions from any of the commissioners. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? It carries, so ordered. Okay, we now move to the Hazel Path Mansion Pavilion Setback Revision. And Mr. Free, who's going to take?
That would be Sidney Simpson.
Sidney? Go ahead.
All right. So in August of last year, the Hazel Path Mansion wanted to provide a pavilion to host weddings. That site plan was approved, and since that time, the owners have purchased the property to the north, which is Lot 12. In the, in the process of translating what was on the site to the field, there was a little discrepancy, and the pavilion has to be moved back from the original location a little bit to where it would encroach on the 60-foot side yard setback that was on the plat that was approved in 1983. When we were doing our research on this, at that time, that wasn't the typical side yard setback, that was the front yard setback for this plan development. So we weren't sure why that was on there, and we found and where the Board of Zoning Appeals had heard a variance request for the lots, the two lots north of this, there was a plat amendment on that, but we couldn't determine if lots 11 and 12 were also part of that request. It's, I apologize, the order of my drawings wasn't the way that I intended. I'd wanted to kind of line them up for you so you could see what I was talking about. There is an aerial image where you could see that all of the side property along the school there has the 60-foot setback and where the easement adjusted, was adjusted on two lots, but not three. So the two properties here are lots 11 and 12. So, and truly, in a plan development such as this, the actual board that should be granting variance would be the Planning Commission. That would be the more appropriate. So as part of the site plan, they're requesting to adjust that side setback from 60 feet to 15 feet, and then also approve the new layout for, that would incorporate the additional parking on the property that they purchased.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions about this particular submittal? Mr. Lee?
Yes, I know parking was a big issue that we had discussed the last time, and leasing of spaces or identification of spaces. With this proposed plan, then, is adequate parking now going to be provided on this space, or could you address that for us, please?
Certainly. They had worked out a parking agreement with adjacent neighbors that would still have to be in effect, but this would provide additional parking spaces on-site as well, which would, would lend itself for more accessible community, so.
So the end result is that it accomplishes the same thing, but there was a, a, a research project in play to make sure that what was done back in, is it 83? Maybe there was some question there, so this more lines this, this project up, makes everything proper.
That is correct. This would clean that side setback up and allow the pavilion to be scooted back the proper distance from the principal building. So this would just clean up that whole process.
Ms. Longmire?
So if I remember correctly, the, the owner of the property, when we granted the building in August, has a lease with one of the other property owners there for a given period of time, like five years or 10 years? I don't remember right now, but is that correct? Am I remembering that?
I believe it was...
Parking?
That's, that's correct, yes. That offsite would still remain intact.
And, and we need to have that in order to still have enough parking without just taking that away and going.
That is correct, yes, ma'am. One thing I would mention as well is that because they have now purchased this additional lot, staff, well, there's a requirement that a final plat be submitted, and that would be reviewed at the staff level. So the site plan approval would have to be contingent upon the final plat approval.
Right.
We're still potentially going to have a problem with parking when the original lease that we approved in August runs out.
Yes, ma'am. But that lease, I believe, the, Mr. Cook is here, but I believe that lease was for 15 years.
Is that right? Was it for 15?
But that would remain intact, even though they're incorporating additional parking.
That's correct. Marty Cook, on behalf of the developer, yes, at, at your commission's urging, we went back and we made that lease much longer and with some tighter renewal restrictions than the original lease had. So I believe it's 15 years with some additional renewals that are difficult for, for either side really to get out of. So it's, it's about as tight as we could get it for as long a period of time as we could get it. But the...
And if I'm not mistaken, Marty did, did you not even, John Bradley, the city attorney, was involved in that process too? And we came to a complete agreement that it was adequate.
That's correct. And, and then the, the addition of the additional parking on, on this lot that's now been purchased since the last time we were here in August will, will help that dramatically so that hopefully the leased area will be really just an overflow that would rarely be used.
What are you anticipating as the number of parking spaces in the newly purchased lot?
149.
149?
149.
That's total. That's it, on-site plus on-site.
Oh, that's total, okay. What's the, in the new lot, what's the total that you were able to get there?
17 on, on-site.
If I can speak to that, there are, part of the staff comments, some of the, the spaces that were going to be incorporated actually would have to be converted to landscape islands because they don't meet parking requirements. So there would be approximately 11 gained from, from the reconfiguration. I will say also, though, that those, this was a parking lot that was already in existence that they have incorporated into this plan and just changed the drive aisle to incorporate those parking spaces more effectively.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Longmire?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a project in front of us that's pretty straightforward. They're agreeing with all staff comments. We have, we have a motion and a second, I believe, already? Okay. All in favor, say aye?
No.
Do we do, do we, do we, do we, okay. All right, do we have a motion to receive the Hazel Path Mansion Pavilion Setback Revision Site Plan? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moves, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Silkwood. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
I abstain.
Ms. McCormick abstains. Okay, it's approved. Thank you.
We have several staff review, staff review projects that are...
Staff review projects that are approved that I will not read. We have some, several staff review projects that are pending, which the commissioners can also read. And so we have all that. Do we have any questions before we move on, though, for the staff director about any of these projects that are either approved or pending from the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Let's move to other. Any other? Okay. Planning Director comments. Mr. Free?
Yes, I just got just a couple of brief comments. One thing, and Lauren will follow up tomorrow with an email. There's a training, as you're all aware, there's a requirement to have four hours of training annually, and we have several opportunities throughout the year, but there's an opportunity coming up where we could piggyback with the city of Gallatin on some training they're doing on March the 30th in the evening from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Lauren will send everybody an email. This isn't anything, you've got to, got to do this, but if you've got the opportunity to do it, you could go ahead and knock out your, your four hours with that, but she'll send information. And just be sure that if you, if you do, do commit to coming, that this is a hard commit because we're going to be paying for everyone that's going, so we just want to make sure. Like I said, if you're not for sure, there'll be other opportunities we'll have throughout the year to, to do that. Just to let you know, some of the things that are going to be on our agenda in April, I'll just go through some of those things that got submitted and are, and are on, are going to be on the agenda for the April Planning Commission meeting. A new hotel, Home to Home Suites, over on Saundersville Road. Martin's Barbecue, so the Black Eyed Pea that's been sitting vacant for a while. Martin's Barbecue is doing an extensive renovation of that existing building, and it's going to be quite a transformation. So that's going to be coming before you. Pet Suites, the site plan, the Pet Suites is still at BOMA. It, it got deferred back to the General Committee, and there was going to make some changes, the developer is going to make some changes about the location of the dumpster, and then that's going back probably next week to the city, to the Board of Mayor and Alderman Meeting for them to take action on. Also, and then so the Pet Suites site plan is the follow-up to that that'll be coming in April. Also, there are two Villas, so it's basically two duplex units that located on Stadium Drive, right across from Stadium Townhomes that was approved a few, a few weeks ago. So there's some development happening over, over there. And so those are some of the things that are, that are in the pike that'll, that'll be coming forward on the agenda next month. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Free. Ms. McCormick, do you have a motion?
I do. Chairman, I, I move that we stand in adjournment.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.